It is six o'clock and we will call the city council meeting to order. This is the last one of the year on December 12th, 2023. We're happy to have all of you here. Thank you for being here. We will start with invocation and pledge of allegiance led by council member Jeff Harris.
Madam Mayor, would you go ahead and close out the workshop?
Oh, that's right. I forgot that. Okay. At six o'clock, we will close the workshop for the city council. And recess back? No, we didn't have to recess back into it. We just closed it. Okay. All right. We'll go ahead with the pledge of allegiance and the prayer.
Prayer first. If you would, please bow with me. Jesus, we celebrate your birth. May we begin to see the world in the light of understanding that you gave us. As you chose the lowly, the outcasts, and the poor to receive the greatest news the world had ever known, so we may worship you in the meekest of heart. May we also remember our brothers and sisters less fortunate than ourselves in this season of giving. Give us the vision to see your love in the world despite of our failure. Give us the faith to trust goodness in spite of our ignorance. Give us the knowledge that we may continue to pray with understanding hearts. Lord, please lead us tonight to be the representatives that we were elected to be. Let our decisions be made with open hearts, minds, knowledge, and based on truth and facts. Dear Lord, we pray this in your holy and heavenly name and ask this in Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Stuart, we have some announcements.
Well, we have one. We are a little hot there, isn't it? I'll talk a little quieter. Since we're moving into the last part of the year, we don't have any items of interest that I'm bringing up as far as events we have going on. But I do want to do one thing, and that's give a shout out to our finance department. I can get the photo up there. There we go. I just wanted to point out that in the past month, they got the triple crown. They were honored with the triple crown from the Government Finance Officers Association. That's because they received the Certificate of Achievement and Excellence, or Excellence in Financial Reporting, Popular Annual Financial Reporting Award. And the third one was the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. So kind of a big deal for them. I know Julie is not back tonight, but I think Trina is in the bag. Just wanted to say thank you to them for all the hard work they did.
Thank you. Okay, council, anyone have an announcement that they would like to make? Brenda, anything on KPA for coming up Saturday?
We are going to be distributing. We did a Fill the Goals event this past weekend and collected a ton and a half of pet food and over $2,000 in donations. And we are going to be distributing all that food out at the Doyle Community Center this Saturday. So please join us there and tell your friends if they are in need of pet food to come get it.
Thank you.
And strong backs, right?
Yes.
All right. At this time, we have several presentations to make. And the first is going to be the Kerrville Kindness Award, going to the Kerrville Christmas Lighting Corporation. So if those people will join me up front, please. I guess we know who they are, don't we? All right. Thank you all for being here. Yes, somebody's not here. Why? I was gonna say.
Where's your lights?
You ran out.
Hello.
I gave them this guy.
No, no, you're good. You're good. All right, good. This is better. Thank you. City of Kerrville recognizes the Kerrville Christmas Lighting Corporation and Kerrville Public Utility Board with December 12th, 2023 Kerrville Kindness Award. After a warehouse fire destroyed all of Kerrville's Christmas decorations in 1993, the Kerrville Christmas Lighting Corporation, KCLC, was formed. In 2000, KCLC became a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. Through private funds, KCLC has raised $250,000, with an additional $1,000 coming from an economic improvement corporation matching fund. Since its inception, KCLC has completed many projects, including decorating the Kirk County Courthouse grounds, securing 44 light pole ornaments for Sidney Baker Street, and funding an electrical grid and lights for the cypress trees on Tranquility Island. This year, KCLC funded 96 light pole ornaments for Highway 27. To enable all of these pole ornaments to be installed, Kerrville Public Utility Board, KPU, general manager Mike Whitler graciously and generously agreed to have the decorations installed by KPU linemen. The efforts of both KCLC and KPU will ensure a Christmas light extravaganza for years to come. The Kerrville Kindness Program offers a sincere thank you to both KCLC and KPU for their civic and holiday spirit. And it's been signed by all of us. And we're seeing your lights. They glitter in the daytime and they shine up at night. Would like to have you, first of all, introduce yourself. Tell us, you guys with KPU, tell us how long you've been there and your job. And then the lighting corporation, let us know how long you've been on the board and we'll do that first.
So I'm Kenneth Becker, and I've been with KPU for 35 years. Worked with LCRRA prior to that, so a total of 39 this year.
And Kenneth is the one that supervised putting the big Christmas tree on the courthouse. He's done that since, what, 11 years now?
I'm John Boling.
I'm a structural engineer. I've been with KPU for one and a half, about one and a half years now.
I'm Larry Lee. Been there 35 years, plus five years with LCRRA, so 40 years now.
And Larry's the one that put all, getting all the ornaments put up too, so he's a key figure.
Mike Whitler, I've been with KPU for 17 years.
Damon Richardson, I've been with KPU 19 years, and I do purchasing and facility maintenance.
And Damon helps, is responsible for helping store all these decorations so that they don't deteriorate during eight months or 10 months or they're not up.
I'm Allison Boucher. I've been with KPU for close to five years. I'm Director of Customer and Community Relations. I also serve on the KCLC board. I've served off and on. I served before KPU. I think I probably started back in 2015 and then rejoined in 2019, somewhere around there.
And Allison is our spark plug and our community relations and publicist for the organization.
I'm Sergio Marquez Lopez. I am the business manager for the CROPS, and I also am part of the KCLC as a treasurer. I've been with them now for three years as part of the board, going on three years. And I've been at the Salvation Army now for a year.
George Acker, we, with these folks here, repurposed the Kerrville Christmas Lighting Corporation from just decorating the courthouse grounds to doing things to benefit the entire city. And I think with these guys, they're just fantastic. And this whole crew up here, it's a team effort. So I applaud you guys.
I'm Charlie McElvein, and I've been on the board for, well, I started with the old group, and then we've been together again since 2020. Yes, 2020.
Bill Rector, member of the KCLC board since 2020 with working for George and Charlie.
Mike, anything you'd like to add?
No, I think really George gets a lot of the credit for this. He really does an outstanding job of twisting arms and making everything happen. So really, the tree on, you know, at the courthouse and all the lights up and down the roads, they wouldn't be there without George. So he deserves tons of credit.
We appreciate all of you. We got a certificate for each of you. And we just, thank you, thank you, thank you. It's been great. We went, what, 25 years without anything?
We're looking for more people to join the Christmas spirit.
Did you get your pictures?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Merry Christmas. You've been a blessing to our city. We appreciate it. All right. I should add, I'm gonna plug in for Larry Lee. You need to go past his house. It's in O'Callaghan. It is fantastic. Beautifully done.
No, the poem.
Christmas in Kerrville, 2023.
Poem author.
Is Lydia here?
Yes.
There she is. Lydia, come on up. She's also part of KPU. So it's kind of a KPU night here. So do you have a copy? Yes, I do. Okay. All right. I'll read the proclamation first. City of Kerrville Proclamation. Whereas, citizens of Kerrville shared written memories, thoughts, visions, and stories into beautifully written poems celebrating a Christmas in Kerrville. And whereas, citizens of Kerrville selected the favorite poem which captured and best described what a Christmas in Kerrville is all about. Whereas, sincere gratitude is extended to Lydia Goldthorne, who has given her talent to the citizens of Kerrville by capturing the true joy and spirit of a Christmas in Kerrville for this and future generations to enjoy. Now therefore I, Judy Eitner, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim that Lydia Goldthorne has written the official 2023 Christmas in Kerrville poem, and I encourage all citizens to join me in celebrating the written talents of Lydia. So we're going to have her read it for us, loud and clear.
I'd like to thank, first of all, you know, everyone that voted for my poem. I really, really appreciate it. Christmas in Kerrville. It's cold and crisp, November's now gone. The deer roam softly on the courthouse lawn. Drawn to the glow of the Christmas tree light, they gently lay down and tuck in for the night. A trail made of concrete follows the flow of the Guadalupe River where the fireflies glow. Downtown is a magnet, and we've all come to see the music, the lights, and shops filled with glee. The newly dressed theater opens its door and pours round the wine while we dance on the floor. So those of us here who hold this town dear say it's Christmas in Kerrville. Wish you were here.
This is for you, and thank you, Lord, for doing this for us. Wonderful. All right. Get some pictures?
Thank you.
All right. That's great. Thank you so much.
Next is Major James Kerr Chapter.
All right. We need the DAR ladies. I think they're all ladies. Are there, do we have any gentlemen with you tonight?
No, not tonight.
We have podards, husbands of the age.
All right. City of Kerrville Proclamation. Whereas, December 7th, 2023 marks the 50th anniversary of the founding of the Major James Kerr Chapter, National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution, which honors the memory and spirit of those who achieved American independence while promoting education, historic preservation, and patriotism. The Major James Kerr Chapter was originally founded December 7th, 1973 by organizing regent Mrs. Herbert S. Long with a charter membership of 24. And whereas, 159 Chapter Daughters continue the tradition, the chapter's tradition of service with more than 4,500 hours of community service this year. The Chapter was nationally recognized for their Day of Service project and a cleanup of the Guadalupe River in 2022, and has promoted education through the DAR American History Essay Contest, the DAR Good Citizen Scholarship Contest, educating on the proper display of the U.S. flag, and promoting Constitution Week at local schools. And whereas, the Chapter is deeply committed to the preservation of historical sites, records, and family bibles, recording personal histories, maintaining and cleaning headstones in local cemeteries, and marking graves. And whereas, the Chapter supports veterans through the DAR service to veterans with volunteer hours, financial support, and participation at the VA, and with local veteran organizations supporting active duty military through Project Patriot and participating in patriotic activities to promote patriotism. Now therefore I, Judy Eitner, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim December 7th as Major James Kerr Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution Day in the City of Kerrville, Texas, in recognition of this vital organization and to celebrate 50 years of service to America. That's great. We appreciate it. Tell us who you are and how long you've been with DAR, and if you have an office.
My name is Dodd Callum. I'm the current regent of our chapter, and I've been in DAR for three years.
And my name is Catherine Galden. I'm currently the third vice regent, and I'm the chair of the Historic Preservation Committee. And I joined DAR in 2017.
I'm Susie McCullough, and I have new member on my name tag because I haven't been in January since January of this year, and I am the historian and worked on the Good Citizen and American History Essay Contest this year.
And I'm Gina Ireland, and I am the chaplain of our chapter. And I joined DAR here in Kerrville in 2013.
I'm Marcy Dunn. I'm the curator of our chapter. I'm in charge of the flags. And I've been a member since 2020.
Thank you all. We'll give this to you. I don't know who wants to hold it, but that is for you. And we'll get a couple pictures here. All right. Thank you all for what you did. All right. We have certificates for outgoing members of two boards, Senior Services Advisory Committee. Do we have anyone? Here they come. All right. City of Kerrville Resolution of Commendation. Whereas, Waverly Jones has served as a member of the Senior Services Advisory Committee, the date of service beginning October 1st, 2021. And whereas, Waverly Jones has faithfully served, has served faithfully and dutifully on said board. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Kerrville, Kirk County, Texas, Waverly Jones be recognized for outstanding service as a member of the Senior Services Advisory Committee, and that on behalf of the citizens of Kerrville, as well as for ourselves individually, we wish to express our sincere appreciation for contributions to the city and the community. So that is for you. And we also, we have, I think we're missing one tonight. Teresa's not here, right? Okay. Whereas, Sandra Yarborough has served as a member of the Senior Services Advisory Committee, the date of service beginning October 1st, 2021. And whereas, Sandra has served faithfully and dutifully on said board. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Kerrville, Kirk County, Texas, Sandra Yarborough be recognized for outstanding service as a member of the Senior Services Advisory Committee, and that on behalf of the citizens of Kerrville, as well as for ourselves individually, we wish to express our sincere appreciation for contributions to the city and the community. We thank both of you. Now, this tells us when you started. Were you both charter members?
Yes.
And that was in?
I started in 19.
Okay, okay. Anything you would like to share with us about the committee or what you've done?
Just last year, we received a grant from AARP for benches at our parks. So that was really nice. So we've gotten that. We've also were the instrumental force to work on the, well, I'm thinking about the National AARP City, Senior City. Kim?
Age-friendly city.
Thank you. Age-friendly city.
Age-friendly city.
Yes, for the AARP. So we are on their website as an age-friendly city nationally. So, and then we've also got a resource guide on the city website that we designed.
Sandra, anything you'd like to share?
Besides that, we've done a couple of functions for seniors over at the center. Christmas dance of Valentine's time. So it's been very good, very much participation.
Good. That's great.
I recommend, if anybody wants to join, please look into it.
Okay. Very good. Very good. Well, we thank you very much. Knee picture? All right. Very good. Thank you. And we'll see that Teresa gets hers. Okay, we have some Main Street Advisory people here. Two. Melissa Southern, Linda Rector, Clint Morris, and Sue Schlesy. Okay, so we've got two of you. Good. All right. All right. City of Kerrville Resolution of Commendation. Whereas, let's get the right one. Lydia Rec, Lyndia.
Lyndia, sorry.
That's all right. Lyndia Rector and Clint Morris have both served as a member of the Main Street Advisory Board. The date of service for both of you was almost the same, beginning, yours was September 24th, and yours was September 25th, 2021. And whereas, both of these individuals have served faithfully and dutifully on said board. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Kerrville, Kirk County, Texas, that Lyndia Rector and Clint Morris be recognized for outstanding service as members of the Main Street Advisory Board, and that on behalf of the citizens of Kerrville, as well as ourselves individually, we wish to express our sincere appreciation for contributions to the city and the community. And these have both been signed by everybody on the council. So we'll give you those. Anything you'd like to share from your time on the council or?
Well, we're just thankful for the programs that we were able to put in place and all the famous bricks that we placed along the streets with the mementos that our citizens put them on them.
Okay.
And the support that Main Street also can give to businesses opening in our community and people wanting to rent their houses.
All right. Clint?
Your Main Street's coming back. Your downtown's coming back. Our buildings are full. There's kind of a new spirit happening down here. Some great new businesses have opened. Encourage everybody to get out, enjoy your downtown, support your downtown businesses and shop local. And your Main Street Board, as we're leaving, there, we saw a lot of great plans that are coming for the next year, for the years to come. So please get engaged.
Good, good. All right. Well, we'll get a couple pictures here. Okay. And we will see that Melissa and Sue get their, their commendation. All right. I believe we're ready for visitors and citizens.
One more. You have two E.
Oh, two E, that's right. I'm sorry. The Charter Review Committee.
Mayor, I'm gonna, oh, he's already on his way. Dutifully. This, you all may remember, back in August, you appointed this seven-member commission, and they are ready to make their report to you. I'll let Mr. Richards do that. I'll just say before I sit down, they just did great work, and it was my pleasure to be part of those meetings that they held and work through their, their workings through of our charter, which is a quinquennial process every five years for our charter. They've got to do that, or you all have to appoint someone to do that. And so they've really done great work.
Can you just use quenianal?
Quenial.
Quenial?
Yes.
Okay.
It's every five years.
Yeah. Well, it's new work for me.
Well, good evening. My name's Greg Richards. I chaired the Charter Review Commission this year, and I want to introduce a couple of our committee members, commission members that are here. Mike Segerman served as the vice chair. Danny Alman and Brenda Craig could not make it tonight. Jason Gilbreth is here as well. Dr. Tim Summerlin and Mrs. Sandra Yarborough. So here's an interesting fact. If you add up all of the years that all of these folks have lived in Kerrville, you get to 220 collective years. And that's not even giving Brenda Craig the full credit for having the years she's lived here. She won't tell me. So it's about a 30-year average per committee member. So these, these are deep waters that served on this committee, and they really approached this with a lot of passion. The City of Kerrville is a home rule city, has the privilege of self-governance. Much of how we choose to govern ourselves is found in the city's charter, which is akin to what we know as a constitution. Having a well-developed, current, and accessible charter provides multiple benefits to the community. The city's charter serves as a legal foundation for how our city government operates. It defines the powers, roles, and responsibilities of elected officials, city departments, and various branches of government. It is, in essence, the rulebook for how our city is run. A well-crafted charter includes provisions that protect the rights and interests of our citizens. It outlines mechanisms for citizen participation, such as elections, public hearings, and referendums, ensuring that their voices are heard in the decision-making process. The charter provides stability and consistency in governance by establishing the rules and procedures that guide our city's activities. It prevents abrupt changes in government structure and policies, ensuring that the city's operations continue smoothly from one administration to the next. While state law provides a general framework for governments, our city charter allows us to tailor our government to the unique needs and priorities of our community. It enables us to address local challenges effectively. When citizens see that our city government operates within a well-defined and transparent framework, it instills confidence in the system. Citizens are more likely to engage in civic activities and contribute positively to the community. Then finally, a well-functioning city charter signals stability and good governance, which can attract businesses, investors, and skilled which can attract businesses, investors, and skilled professionals to our city. This can lead to economic growth and increased opportunities for our residents. A well-functioning city charter is the backbone of effective local government, essential for serving the diverse and evolving needs of our community. It safeguards democracy, promotes transparency, and enables us to build a prosperous and resilient city that residents can be proud of. As such, it is crucial to periodically review and update the charter to ensure that it remains aligned with our community's values and aspirations. Your Charter Review Commission enthusiastically undertook this task with vigor and a positive attitude. Over the course of seven meetings, we read and considered every word of the city's charter. And thanks to Dr. Summerlin, every punctuation mark, every gender reference, and every misspelling. We sought input from the city manager, the city attorney, city staff, the community at large, as well as a charter expert. We identified and prioritized changes we felt were important to bring to the community for a vote, and the report in front of you represents our work product. I am very pleased to say that the commission reached consensus on each and every issue, leveraging a collaborative spirit to which we were all committed. The report submitted by the CRC is very detailed, showing in red line the changes we encourage you to give the voters of this community the opportunity to consider, and the rationale behind each change. I won't restate all that here, but we'll share with you five themes that embody these proposed changes. Theme number one, simplifying and clarifying the charter. By removing topics that are already covered in state law, we can reduce confusion and potential conflicts between the city charter and state statutes. This simplification ensures that our charter remains a concise and effective document for governing the city. The grammar and punctuation changes may seem minor, but they can significantly improve the clarity of the charter. A clearer document is easier to understand for both city officials and the public, reducing the risk of misinterpretation. And these changes enhance accessibility for citizens and officials alike. The second theme is that extending the council member terms to three years. Longer terms allow council members more time to become deeply knowledgeable about the city's issues, policies, and procedures. This knowledge leads to better informed decision-making and more effective governance. Council members with extended terms have the opportunity to develop relationships and collaborations that can benefit the city in the long run, as they can work on larger projects and initiatives over a more extended period. The third theme is the staggered terms for the council and the mayor. The staggered terms create a smoother transition of leadership. With regular elections and only a portion of the council up for election at a time, there's less disruption to the continuity of city government. By spreading out the elections, we encourage greater voter turnout and engagement. Voters have the opportunity to focus their attention on a smaller number of candidates and issues in each election, leading to more informed decisions. And we also explain the proposed election cycle, which is two council members in the first year, two in the second year, and then the mayor in the third year, and then that process repeats. For the upcoming election, two council members and the mayor will be elected. The council members will serve a two-year term, and then the proposal, if adopted by the community, would be that the mayor will have one year added to his or her term for a total of three years. Then in 2025, the next two council members will start the cycle of being elected for three-year terms. The fourth theme is increasing council member stipends. Increasing stipends acknowledges the commitment and the effort that you guys make into serving the city. This financial support can attract a wider range of candidates, including those who might not otherwise be able to afford to serve in this capacity. The current stipend has been in place at least since 1984, at $25 per meeting, or an average of $100 a month. The proposed increase to $250 per month is actually less than the inflation-adjusted value of $25 per meeting as of 1984. So, it's not a big raise. Eliminating the per-meeting component will also reduce staff time in calculating to council, calculating payments to council members monthly. Then the fifth theme is that much of the institu... the continuity of government. Much of the institutional knowledge, relationships, insight, and capacity to effectively operate the city rests in its staff, with the city manager and the city attorney being key figures. Requiring a supermajority to hire and fire these key positions ensures that these decisions are made with broad consensus and deliberation. This helps prevent abrupt changes in leadership that can disrupt the city's operations. Continuity and leadership is crucial for maintaining institutional knowledge and ensuring a smooth transition of responsibilities. This provision promotes stability and effective city government. In closing, let us remember that a well-functioning city charter is not just a document. It is the embodiment of our commitment to good governance, transparency, and the welfare of our community. It is the bedrock upon which our city's past, present, and future rest. A city charter is a promise to our citizens, a promise that their rights will be protected, their voices heard, and their needs addressed. It is a promise that their government will operate efficiently, ethically, and with a long-term vision for our shared future. As we consider the proposed charter revisions, let us not lose sight of the profound impact this document has on every aspect of our city's life. It is the blueprint for how we build and sustain a thriving, vibrant community. So I encourage you to take, to approach the task of charter revision with a sense of purpose and dedication, understanding that your decisions will ripple through generations to come. Let us ensure that our city charter continues to serve as a beacon of responsible governance, inspiring confidence, attracting opportunity, and fostering the well-being of all who call our city home. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration of these proposed revisions, and for each of your dedication to the future of our community. If I or any other member of the commission can answer any questions, we'd be happy to field them now.
Counsel, anyone have any questions? Or Mr. Richards? I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. You guys have done a great job in a short time, and we appreciate it very, very much. So, to all of your...
Absolutely.
Your committee, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
And I believe, I'm sorry. With this, we will, this is just information tonight, and this will come back to us in January, right?
Yes. I was asking if we could get some clarification on how it's going to work. Are we gonna, so council has to vote on these? Are we going to have just a general discussion at our next meeting? Or are we going to have the first reading of an ordinance presented? Because then I also know council can, like I said, vote to approve or deny any one of these, but it can also add to that if possible. So how are we gonna, how are we planning to go about that?
What I would suggest you do is have an item on your, I think it's January 9th, your first meeting date in January, to consider the recommendations from this report. And then that would, that would follow with an ordinance that will order the election and set out the amendments that you are proposing for the, for the voters to consider.
Okay, so initial first discussion, first meeting in January, and then first reading, second meeting in January with, or first reading and second meeting in January, second reading on that ordinance, first meeting in February. Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, we are now ready for number three, our visitors and citizens forum. Shelley, do we have some names?
Yes, ma'am, we have six. Vinnie Mifsud.
Please state your name and your address.
Yes, Mayor, my name is Vinnie Mifsud. My address is 201 Francisco Limo Street. And I just wanted to thank the mayor and all the council members, and the city attorney, city manager, thank you for letting me have the honor and the privilege to speak. I really do appreciate it. The reason we are here today is because recently I have acquired a very beautiful property in Kerrville downtown, across the river from Tranquility Island, adjacent to Lewis Mays Park. Used to be owned by Carol Abbott. I don't know if you know who Carol Abbott was, Mr. Texas Wildflower. And basically, he was renowned for the Bluebonnet. He's the reason we have Bluebonnet in Texas. So it's a pretty big deal. On our property, we have a monument dedicated to him. And also, I have Sylvia Seeker. Her husband flew Lady Bird Johnson and Carol Abbott around the country and spreading the Wildflower Initiative. So, I think, you know, what, a beautiful thing that you all have is the River Trail. And I would, we, our goal is to enhance that. What we would like to do is have a food park with a live music venue, with delicious beverages, where people can bring their kids down to the river, enjoy it, listen to nice local music artists, and support Carol Abbott's dream. You know, her husband's dream was to make it a beautiful park, and unfortunately passed away before that could happen. And we are working together to try to make that dream a reality. And we need y'all's help. We've been having several issues with the city planners, back and forth. We have certain arrangements that were in writing with the previous administration that gave us the right to water tap and sewage tap, because she sold that right to allow Kerrville to bring water and sewer to part of the city. In return, they were supposed to grant us a free tap whenever we would want it. And I even have that in writing by Scott Loveland with Public Works a couple months ago. But I would love to see what y'all can do to help us facilitate, you know, our project. Because I believe we can seriously enhance the River Trail by providing, you know, a nice venue where families can come, enjoy good food, and enjoy the, you know, the park. And, and that's basically, you know, what I wanted to express to y'all. And, you know, and it means a lot to me. I came to Kerrville when I was 10 years old. My dad took me in the 80s to the Kerrville Folk Life Festival. So that was the best memories. That's when I first fell in love with Kerrville, when I was 10 years old. And I'm just grateful to be here, and I wish that y'all can consider that my property's in the same elevation as Lewis Mays Park and Tranquility Island. And all we would like is the utilities to be able to come down there, so that we can utilize it in a safe manner. Now, I do have a team of our engineers that can make it safe for the public, and could make it, everything that y'all would request. But I would just like the dialogue, because it seems like we've been getting a lot of back and forth, and we're not going anywhere with that.
But you have been in touch with the city.
Yes, ma'am, with the city planners, ma'am.
With the city planners.
And they've been basically saying, you need a driveway, but we won't let you put a driveway. You need a permit, but we're not going to give you a permit. So it's been a lot of back and forth. And Sylvia is also going to speak on the matter. Basically, there were certain arrangements the city made with her specifically, and she's part of our project. And we would love the city to honor those commitments that were made by the previous administration.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sylvia Seeker?
Members, mayor, and council. I'm Sylvia Seeker. I want to bring a little history up. In 1986, utility services in Kerrville, Texas, gave a utility service a letter to Mr. Seeker that there was sufficient water to take care of four acres at Thompson Drive and Limo Street for fire services, or emergency services. Then again, in August of 1986, the United Services in Kerrville again said, "We will honor that." We have a letter in regard to that. And in 2012, the City of Kerrville approached me for an easement across the property in order to run sewer and water lines across a section of it. And for that, I would have a no-fee connection service. That service has been completed. All surveys were completed, were registered, and recorded. And with this information I have, I'd like each one of you to have a copy. If you so desire, let me know, and I will afford it to you. That's the main thing, I think, that is important to this project. Carol Abbott was a personal friend of Lady Bird Johnson. My husband flew them all over the state of Texas, spreading news about how important it was for the state highways to have wildflowers. And that did occur. And Mr. Herring, you probably remember that as well. And over the years, Mr. Abbott continuously had water on one acre of that property. There is repairing rights, and it has transferred to this gentleman. They raised wildflowers, and wildflower seeds were given to the public. Not sold, but given, and given to the state. After that time, Mr. Abbott died. There's a plaque, a bronze plaque, on a huge rock. If y'all go by that rock along the Limo Street Bridge, you'll see the plaque, and it has Carol Abbott's name on it, Mr. Wildfire of Texas. I'd like for you all to sometimes take a walk around that area. We have some beautiful area along, across the river, with the River Walk. I think what this gentleman is trying to do is going to be another betterment, as so many cars pass over this area. And you see that it needs to be improved. If you all have any questions and want any paperwork, I'll be happy to afford it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sean Tinnery?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Sean Tinnery, 135 Indian Oaks Drive, owner of TNT Services here in Kerrville, Texas. So I'm trying to conclude what Mr. Vinnie and Miss Vinnie have, have brought to you guys. From an engineering standpoint, we have various parameters that we're not able to come to conclusions on because of some of these previous agreements and stuff like that. So, really, we just need help getting this project underway, and just trying to figure out the parameters of what we've got to work with. So, anything you guys can do to help us push this forward? Also, there's a, a note here of, since Mr. Vinnie took ownership of this property, the taxes on this property have increased 200, or 2,000%. And we are not getting any type of public works or utilities, and having a lot of backlash from planning and zoning. So, to me, that's kind of, you know, odd. So, we just ask for you guys' help on this. Anything you can do to point us in the right direction and just give us some headway. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Dana Mohamady?
Hi, I'm Dana Mohamady, and I'm really nervous. I live at 135 John Beaven. And I guess the reason I was talking to you guys is I'm trying to get, I don't know where to go to, actually. I wrote to the mayor and the city council here in Kerrville and in Ingram, because I live right on the edge there in between. And I'm trying to get you guys to help work out the granting and get an MEP company to take advantage of the grants that were funded to Texas, the $10 billion grants for the natural gas lines and power companies, so that our residents here don't suffer and die. We had 248 deaths in the last freeze, and there were 11 deaths with a heat wave. So I am trying to, I don't know how to go about, get the city to help employ the MEP companies I've been talking with, and pair them with the power companies that are out here to get those lines put in. We have better gas emissions with natural gas. We have more job opportunities. It's more economic-friendly for us, and it, it is less harmful for us. Causing, propane can cause things like seizures, heart problems silently, and our residents suffer from that. Being in the medical field, I like to see less of that, that they don't know that they're getting hurt by it. So that's why I came here to speak today. I did write a letter, I believe, to the mayor and the council members. So that's why I'm here. So if you guys can help me figure out how to move that forward, it will also provide more jobs with natural gas and electrical lines out here, which will help our community. And I'm kind of newer in the community since April, so that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
George Barudy?
George Barudy, 1616 Glen Road. I'm just here to report back a little bit on what I reported to you last meeting. A little disappointed in the... A little disappointed in the resolution of staff on this situation. I, if you recall, I described to you an incident that occurred in the parking lot here about a month ago, and at the very meeting that I reported that to you, sitting right here during one of your breaks, I got accosted by the same person enough to where the police officer in the room came up to excuse him from the location. So I had conversations with staff and was told nothing's really going to be done about it. This room is supposed to be where you can come and safely discuss issues without being personally attacked, and I'm not really sure how any of what has occurred fits with Curville kindness because it didn't feel very kind to me. The other is, as I asked the staff member I was speaking with, had it been a city employee that was doing that, they would have been reprimanded, and he agreed that that's probably the case. I hinted at the fact that if it wasn't me being on the receiving end, that something might have been done. I would ask if it was any of y'all's mom who was accosted that way in this chamber, my guess is something would be done. The something that I asked for was the person doing this has a special seat in this room and with the city gets sort of preferred access. They're a quasi-representative of you all and the city, and when they take it upon themselves, feel empowered to do things like this, it sends a different message than I think you wish to send. And I'm going to ask again, I asked it last time, if one of you all would please reach out to me to discuss it. I would really appreciate it. I appreciate staff doing that, but I had asked that they let me discuss it. I was told it wasn't their decision to make, and I asked that I speak with whoever's decision or whatever body's decision it was before a decision was made, and I wasn't afforded that opportunity. So, like I said, I would encourage you to take charge of this room as you've done in the past and take ownership of the friends that we keep and that we give preferred access here. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Blackburn?
Bill Blackburn, 809 Blue Bell Road, Mayor and Council. I want to thank you, our city council members, for your service. I well know it takes a lot of time and can be very demanding, but I thank you for your spirit of service, your good judgment, and your commitment to all the citizens. Thank you for your restraint when you're criticized. Second, I want to thank the city staff. I've worked on projects with the city staff for 22 years, including the four years I was on the council. I am very impressed with this staff, and I am impressed with the way the city provides continuing skill development for the staff, from lean Six Sigma to leadership training to training by departments, certifications in the different areas of work, and encouraging continuing education, including completing bachelor's and master's degrees. All of this builds the capacity of the City of Curville. So thank you for what you do, and I'm going to add one other thing. In honoring K-Pub tonight, I'm convinced K-Pub is one of the best places to work in Curville. It is very well managed. They have an apprenticeship program. If somebody that coming out of high school, you don't have to have a college degree, can be on the staff at K-Pub, and this apprenticeship program based on 19 points of the Department of Labor, you can see advancement over the years. And so they promote from within. You look at the leadership of K-Pub, they have come up those steps, and we just, I think we ought to commend them and thank them. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is the end of the citizen speakers, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. In response to what you have been trying to do, I think we need conversation with our city staff. There's lots of questions, and so just give us some time. We need to get information, and we appreciate your bringing it before us tonight, so.
Madam Mayor, if you want Stewart so that he could speak, or if you just want to have it later?
Let's do it later, if that's okay, Stuart, and we'll sort things out, sort things out. Okay. And the same thing on the natural gas, we need to, we just, we need to get some more information, those, yes, well.
Would you like me to do one of those applications all over it?
That would be fine. That would be fine. All right. We are ready for the consent agenda, number four. We have one, two, three, four, five, six items on there. Is there any item that any council member feels like we need to pull?
Yes, Mayor, I'm going to pull 4D for an amendment.
Okay, 4D.
4D?
E, yes.
4D.
Okay.
Is there any other?
I'm sorry. Thank you for saying that. No, 4E. I was mistaken.
Oh, okay, 4E. Okay. All right. Anyone else? Okay. Do we have a motion for A, B, C? I'll move that we approve resolution 4A, 4B, 4C, 4D, and 4F.
Second?
We have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. It is unanimous, 4E.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, these are the minutes of the regular meeting of the city council that was held on November 14th, 2023. I brought this to, I discussed this with the mayor too as well. I have an amendment to make to page three of the minute.
What was the agenda date?
November 14th was the meeting minutes that we're considering. So on page three, I'm going to move to approve them, but I have an amendment. And like I said, I spoke with the mayor before the meeting with agreement, and I let the city secretary know, and I can provide a copy of what I have here to both of them after this meeting. So I moved to approve the minutes of the city council regular meeting held on November 14th, 2023, with an amendment on page three by striking alleged and inserting stated and striking comma in which Dalton Rice established as false advising that Mayor Eichner has the ability to call a special called meeting at any time, so that if adopted, the sentence will read, "Councilmember Garcia stated Mayor Eichner had publicly disclosed confidential information provided in closed executive session, period."
Do we have a second? I'll second that.
Thank you.
All in favor? Raise your right hand.
I wasn't here, but I'll.
Oh, okay. That's all right. How many are four? I need right hands of those who are four.
I'll abstain.
Okay, all right. We have four. Any against?
I'll vote four, since I have to vote.
Okay, we have five.
Five.
Five unanimous. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. I would like to just make a statement to 4A, that resolution in the consent agenda, it's a great, great interci, well, not intercity. It's a great, great agreement between three cities, between Curville, Fredericksburg, and the City of Burney. And I just want to applaud our staff for working on that, and that is just, it will help all of them when it comes to responses that we have to, that they have to respond to. So I just applaud them for that. And also on 4C, that's also that agreement with the Alamo Community College District to allow emergency medical technicians to participate in ambulance clinics, and I think that is another great thing that we can do. So kudos to everyone that had something to do with both of those. Okay, then, I'd like to change up our meeting a little bit. We have some consultants here who might like to go home. So I would like for us, council, if you have, don't have any disagreements with bringing 8B forward at this time. Is everyone okay with that?
8B, you said?
6A, as in Adam.
No.
She said 8B.
I believe it's 8B.
Amendment to the design bill.
Yes.
That's correct.
For the public safety building.
8B?
Are you okay with that, Shelley?
Yeah, I just thought it was another one that y'all were going to bring up.
So, and that, we'll have a report from them, and then they can head home. So, all right. Michael, are you going to introduce this?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Sorry, I'm a little off guard here. Appreciate y'all making this. We have Josh Holcomb from Burn Construction here. You heard from his boss, Tony Battle, earlier about where we are at with the public safety design process. We are currently in our 60% drawings, design development, which they call it, and so we are inching our way closer to a full contract. So what is before you tonight is a request for an early work package release in addition to what's called general conditions, which essentially gets, gives them the ability to get mobilized, get their bonds, get their insurance all in place, and they can be out on the site, and they can start doing their work. And so in addition to doing that civil work, we have a lot of items that have very long lead times, and so in order to stay on schedule, we have to start working on those purchases as soon as we can. So you'll have this first amendment here tonight, and then in January, we'll have a second amendment for a second set of early work packages, which will be mechanical equipment. So this one is civil work and electrical work, gears, generators, things like that. And the next one will be concrete, structural steel, and mechanical equipment. And then finally, hopefully at March, February, if I push them, March, it's March, I can't say that to those guys, we'll come back to you with the full guaranteed maximum price contract. So you have the amendment to the agreement, the first amendment to the agreement in there. The exhibits attached to it include the scope of work, which describes what you all, we will be purchasing in this first iteration. And with that, again, Josh, myself, and Joel Kokemoore from Fries and Nichols, who is our consultant, kind of our aide in this process and has been invaluable, really. We've been going through and will continue to go through a whole lot of bid packages just left, right, and center. There's going to be about 50 different subcontractors and all their subcontractors once we get to the end of this. So it's been going well, and we appreciate everybody's putting their heads down and working real hard on this project. So they're all here to answer the hard questions, and I can answer the not hard ones.
Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, sure. So just to kind of review.
Well, have you come to the mic if you would, please?
This first package, the intent on this is to get the ball rolling for the overall contract. And as you said, the early work. Work package one, it's the electrical gear, the generator, and then the civil work. The intent with this design build process is to accelerate the actual construction process, and by releasing us with this early work package, we're essentially able to start on construction while completing the design on the remainder of the building systems. The contract value is there for the amendment. We've got one other early work package. Michael talked about it earlier, and then we'll come with the overall GMP in March.
Okay.
I just wanted to add, the early work package process is a normal part of the design build process, so this is well within our comfort zone and something that is typically utilized to make sure that the overall project schedule is maintained. It's critical to the overall project schedule. We don't have all of the details of the schedule ironed out just yet. We talked about it earlier in the presentation that we're shooting for that window of second quarter of 2025, so this early work package is absolutely critical to making that window for the completion of the building. So I just, I want to emphasize that, that this early work package facilitates that completion timeline that we will finalize at the GMP stage. But right now, we're targeting that second quarter, and this early work package is critical to that.
All right. Council, any questions, comments? Shelley, I didn't have you read it in. Do you need to read it in? I'm sorry.
First amendment to the design build contract with S.S. Burn, Inc., doing business as Burn Construction Services Corporation in the amount of $7 million, $26,421 for the public safety facility project, and there are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right. If we have.
Yes, there is one citizen speaker signed up.
Do we have a speaker?
Yes, George Barudy.
So you said 8D is George?
8D. 8D. Okay.
Okay. All right. All right, this is exciting. It's means we're moving on, and I think the, both chiefs ought to be dancing a jig of excitement here, so.
Would you like us to make a motion?
Yes, I would like us to make a motion. I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to finalize the design build contract amendment for the public safety facility project.
Second?
We have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand and your left hand, and both hands. So it is unanimously approved. All right. Thank you, thank you, and you gentlemen are excused, and thank you for being here, and we'll probably see you in the future.
Back to 5A, I guess.
We're going to make another change. We're going to, Christmas presents here. Stay, you gotta hang on and stay with us. Let's do, bring 6B forward because it really needs to come before 5A. So let's bring 6B forward. Shelley, if you will read that in for us?
Yes, correct.
Ordinance number 2023-32, second reading. An ordinance changing the zoning of a property known as 518 and 520 Lower Street, consisting of lots 1 through 3, block 25 of the Westland Edition, and within the City of Curville, Kerr County, Texas, from a single-family residential with accessory dwelling unit zoning district R1A to a like commercial zoning district C2 and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right. Drew?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. No presentation, as this is a second reading, but this does finalize the C2 zoning and the conditional use permit request for 5A is allowed by C2, so the second reading needed to come prior to the public hearing of the conditional use permit. But no changes since first reading, and staff and Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval.
All right. Council, questions or comments on this? All right. Do we have a motion? Go ahead. Don't everybody speak at once. Come on.
I move that we approve ordinance number 2023-32 on second reading.
Do we have a second? Second. Thank you. All in favor, right hand, please, and it is unanimous. All right. All right, now we can go back to the regular schedule, and we won't, don't think we need to deviate. Okay, this is a public hearing. If you'll read in 5A, please, Shelley.
Resolution number 39-2023, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize the building contractor general on property generally located adjacent to and east of the intersection of Woodlawn Avenue and Lower Street, consisting of lots 1 through 3, block 25, Westland Edition, more commonly known as 518 and 520 Lower Street. Said property is located within a single-family residential with accessory dwelling unit zoning district R1A, and making said permit subject to certain conditions and restrictions. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Anything to add, Drew?
Just the correction this is now. Just the correction, this is now C2 property, with the, with the approval of that zoning ordinance. Again, it is, was zoned R1A, now zoned C2. It is a conditional use permit, and they are looking to build a new storage area for customer materials for some of their construction projects. Will be screened to the alley, so the adjacent neighbors will have screening. There is an existing fence, we'll confirm with the contractor if it's, if it meets the screening requirements or not. Of course, they'll build a new fence if, if necessary. But planning and zoning commission recommended approval on October 5th with a unanimous vote. Pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing?
I think they're actually, they're either replacing a pole shed that's there, is what they're doing, yes.
That's correct. There's a small shed on the property, you can kind of see it in that west corner, or east corner of the property, replacing that with this new shed.
And there is lots of screening behind that with the trees and, and all, so. All right, council, questions, comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 39-2023.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
Yes, can we make sure that we make clear that any reference to the zoning district R1A is now corrected to reflect what we just adopted?
Yes.
As C2, yeah, so just make sure.
Take care of that.
That will be clear in the minutes in the motion.
All right, all in favor, right hand, please?
Mayor, hang on one second. Peruti is wise in his ways, he's been here a number of times, he didn't hold a public hearing, he didn't announce.
Oh, oh, you are, you are exactly right. Thank you. At 7:12, we will open the public hearing. Any speakers? At 7:12, we will close the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, George.
Thank you, George. Okay, we had a motion, and we have a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. All right. Moving on, we will go to five B. This is also a public hearing, as Shelley will tell us. So if you'll read us in, Shelley, please.
Resolution number 40-2023. A resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a dwelling, single-family, detached, with accessory dwelling unit on the property consisting of lot 13, block 3, Methodist Encampment Edition, more commonly known as 1312 Cedar Drive. Said property is located within a single-family residential zoning district R1, and making said permit subject to certain conditions and restrictions herein. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Any comments from staff?
Again, the.
Drew, yes, what do you have for us?
I'm sorry, the request is tied to a site plan. The applicant is also going to the zoning board of adjustment to amend the regulations on the maximum square footage. So they did provide two site plans, one with a 600 foot, which meets our standard 50% rule, and one with a 900 square foot footprint, which would be the increase. But since that it's a variance to the development standards, they're taking that to the zoning board of adjustment, instead of making it a condition of the, the CUP. So they're, they're scheduled for zoning board of adjustment for that case as well. That also includes public hearing and notification to all the property owners around. They did work with a lot of their neighbors ahead of time, before P&amp;Z, and did have 17 neighbors in favor of the request. So they certainly did their homework and let them know that they were gonna request a larger home than that 600 square foot. Basically, they're trying to design the home for handicap accessibility, and that extra 300 square feet gave them a lot more leeway to make it accessible. And the planning and zoning commission also approved this with unanimous vote on November 2nd.
And this is going to sit back, there's a, a wall of rocks, as, when I drove past, so it will sit within those parameters, I believe.
I believe that's right.
Yeah.
So from the street side, looking at the house, it'll be on the left side of the house.
Yes, yes.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, council, any questions, comments? All right, at 7:15, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? At 7:15, we will close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve resolution number 40-2023.
Second?
We have a second, all in favor, right hand, please, and it is unanimous. Five C. Shelley, if you will read this in.
Resolution number 42-2023. A resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a dwelling, single-family, detached, with accessory dwelling unit on the property consisting of lot 19, block 4, Highlands Edition, more commonly known as 505 East Lane. Said property is located within a single-family residential zoning district R1, and making said permit subject to certain conditions and restrictions contained herein. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Drew?
Similar case for an accessory dwelling unit. This one is actually gonna be converting an existing structure that's already on the property. So it'll be tied to this site plan, to the existing structure, and then planning and zoning commission recommended approval with unanimous vote on November 2nd.
Okay, council, questions or comments? I had a question. I, I'm a little, was a little confused. As I read this, the owner of this property lives across the street.
I think.
I didn't understand that they lived in that residence.
I think it's a family member that lives in the residence.
Okay, all right.
They own both properties.
They own, okay, okay, all right. I was a little concerned about having two long-term rentals with, that would not be family.
If I'm not mistaken, they said it was a family member that lives in the property.
Okay, all right, okay, that, that explains things, then. There was one, I believe one opposition, from the lady who lives next door, who has But she was the only one, and I think she was concerned it was going to affect the chickens, am I right?
Right.
Yes.
If, any exterior, since it is an existing structure, any exterior renovations will require updating to dark sky lighting. That was the biggest concern, was the lighting affecting the chickens.
Okay.
If I'm, yeah, so with the existing structure, any new lighting on the exterior will have to comply.
Okay.
So if they, if they're not replacing it, then they'll just amateurize with everything else, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I think she was also concerned about a noise factor, is what's in her third paragraph. Yeah.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so at 7:18, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak?
George Peruti, 6 and 60 Glen Road. So it's, it's not so much specific to this, but these two cases bring up something that other cities look at, and I, I would like us to look at, which is the possibility of one-up zoning being kind of free by right. Accessory dwelling units, the consideration would be, instead of having to make people come in and ask about this, look at the possibility, there's plus and minus, look at the possibility of allowing accessory dwelling units with specific criteria, but just by right, permitted by right in an R1 zone, anyways, just, just clean this up. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion?
Be happy to move.
I think you guys are waiting for Santa Claus.
Resolution number 42-2023.
I will second.
We have a second, thank you. All in favor, right hand, please, and it is unanimous. All right. Six A. Shelley?
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance number 2023-31, second reading. An ordinance submitting ordinance number 2003-08, which created a planned development district on an approximate 798.7 acre tract of land generally located northeast of the intersection of State Highway 16 and Interstate Highway 10. Set amendments to update the concept plan in the land use table included within ordinance number 2003-08, to combine various residential lot sizes into a single-area parcel, and to alter the layout of the golf course area and commercial areas, establishing a penalty and effective date, and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right, this is a second reading on this, and I think it is important to point out that there have been comments on water for this particular property. Water is not what we are looking at at this time. This is strictly amending the original ordinance, or not ordinance, but the original plan. Drew, anything to tell us?
Yes, since the first reading, the applicant and their team have met with the neighbors. They did work out a change to the concept plan. So if you notice, in the upper right-hand corner, there were previously approximately one-acre lots proposed, totaling about 11 lots adjacent to this neighborhood. They agreed to come back down to five lots with a minimum of three acres. There is an amendment, I believe you have before you, to the ordinance itself, to put that in the ordinance as well, not just on the concept plan. Notwithstanding anything to the contrary of this ordinance, or any other document related to the property, include the master plan shown in exhibit B, there shall be no more than five lots with a minimum area of at least three acres per lot along the common property line which runs south of Whiskey Ridge Trail. And there's an additional note, I'm certain you can't read on your screen, because I can't either. The access point on that northeast corner is marked as an emergency access only, and will be a locked crash gate for any emergency in or out of the property for either neighborhood, since they both do have some long, long dead ends getting back to Highway 16. Both neighborhoods would actually have access through that gate should there be an emergency and necessitate that. With that, the, I don't know, the applicant is here, if you have any further questions of those conversations, but pleased to answer any other questions.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, but I just want to commend you for getting together with your neighbor and sitting down and talking it out. It's amazing what can be accomplished when people agree to just sit and compromise, so thank you.
I appreciate that as well.
And I add the same thank you. That was, if, if, if this could happen with most of our projects, we would, our meetings would be short, so thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, any other, any further questions, any comments, council, other than a big thank you to all of them? All right, do we have a motion?
I move we adopt ordinance number 2023-31 on second reading.
Oh, second. We have a second, all in favor, right hand, please, and it passes unanimously.
Good luck to you.
Thank you, yes. Another nice Christmas present. Okay, we are ready for six C. Shelley?
Ordinance number 2023-33, second reading. An ordinance submitting chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas, by changing the zoning of the property known as 226 Hopper Road, FM 783, an approximate 1.71 acre tract out of the full state. Survey number 120, abstract 138, from a single-family residential zoning district R1, to a residential transition zoning district R2, and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
Drew, second reading, anything?
Second reading, no changes.
All right.
Mr. Bacon has, has been very patient.
He has been. Do you have anything you would like to say, Rodney? All right, do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance number 2023-33 on second reading.
Second.
We have a second, all in favor, right hand, please, and it is unanimous. All right. Okay, seven A. Shelley?
Ordinance number 2023-34. An ordinance submitting the city's fiscal year 2024 FY 2024 budget to allocate funds to be used for expenses related to the city's preparation for, and as response to the total solar eclipse event, which will take place April of 2024, and there are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right. What do you have for us?
Well, good evening, mayor, council. So we're presenting to you tonight a budget amendment to the fiscal year 24 Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund in regards to funding the total solar eclipse on April 2, 2024. The final planning and estimating for this event wasn't quite there yet when we proposed the fiscal year 24 budget to you, so we determined that we need additional funding, funding. All right, so for the funding, we've spoken to several cities about their plans, and the common funding source are the use of hot funds. And this event would be ineligible expense for hot funds, as it's helping put heads in beds, and many lodging providers, they're reporting that they are now sold out for this time period, and they are requiring minimum, minimum stays of four nights. On the merchandise sales, the Parks Department, they've been selling merchandise since last fiscal year, and they're putting that towards this cause. Last fiscal year, they brought in $32,500, and then we've already reeled in about $10,000 here in fiscal year 24, so we feel good about exceeding the current revenue budget for the merchandise. And then on public safety parks and public works, they've been, they've held many meetings this year, and this has all started since fiscal year 19, as y'all know, and they've been working with outside agencies on some grants and mutual aid support. So we'll look at some of those here on this slide. Parks, they've been researching private organizations, they've received $10,000 from a grant from NASA this year, and as well as some last year, and there's potential for more to come from that source, if we so ask. Tech Dot is also in our plans, we have submitted a drawing to them, there's a bid out right now for approval. We don't have an answer yet, we expect early January to determine if they can help us or not, but that ask is for them to cover traffic control on Highway 16 and Highway 27 during the event. Also, there's potential for disaster recovery grants, funding for, if the governor was to declare a disaster for this event, there are possibly some reimbursement-based grants that way also. All in all, we have a national emergency response to support the EOC, we have local organizations that are gonna support all those lifeline, community lifelines that we need to go on with this event. So you may remember this from last month's workshop, and we presented this to you in two scenarios, scenarios, one with the Tech Dot support and one without. All in all, we anticipate this event to have a budget of $750,000 is where we landed at. Parks and Recs, they're shifting their normal October River Fest to this April timeframe, and public safety will cover all the emergency response, provide EMS and PD, the public works budget there, for the local streets and traffic control, and then we have the Tech Dot plugged in as an expense there. We also have $20,000 plugged in for contingency. So how do we get there to cover these things? We, we already have budget in the fiscal year 24 hot fund, solar eclipse, $100,000. We actually budgeted $50,000 in fiscal year 22 and 23, and some of those monies were spent on merchandise and deposits for porta-potties and stuff. That left $45,000 in, that rolled into fund balance that we didn't use, so that, that would come back up. In fiscal year 24, Parks and Recs, their operational budget, they had put some monies toward this event also, so we'll move over the $17,000 they had allocated in operations. You have the existing River Fest budget for fiscal year 24 that we would use, that's $90,000, and then we have received $19,000 in donations, and then we expect to obtain probably another $20,000 this year in private donations. And as I stated earlier, we, the merchandise, we've already made up $32,000 of that, and we anticipate that we can bring in about another $59,000 this year. And then we do have a planned parking situation, where they will be transporting visitors to Lewis Hayes Park, and they expect to obtain about $30,000 in revenues to fulfill that, some of that budget. So then that leaves the gap of $335,000 we need for the $750,000 budget. Right now, if Tech Dot does come on and help us, that will reduce that to $185,000, but tonight, we want to ask for the full $335,000, that way we do not have to come back to ask for additional, because time is of the essence here. We have to get everything in place and get going. But we assure you that any expenses, anything not spent, will return right back to fund balance, so if Tech Dot comes in, we'll give that back to fund balance. So, I know this is a lot of numbers and a lot of language, but basically, what we're going to do is create one line item in the hot fund for the solar eclipse expenses, and that's going to be increased to $750,000, and then that will be offset to all the revenues that we anticipate to have and plug it with the fund balance to fulfill that budget. There's Med. All right, so we've discussed all this, we've planned, we've cut, we've looked at it at different angles, and the eclipse is going to happen whether we plan for it or not. So, we want to take the route and be safe for the citizens of our community, all the visitors coming in, be ready for any emergencies that may happen. So, we're asking for your approval to amend our fiscal year 24 hot budget so that we can draw down fund balance and fulfill the budget we need to make this event go off. I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any idea when Tech Dot may give you the...
Give us an answer.
Go ahead.
I spoke to Stuart today, and he said we're hoping mid-January.
And what's our hot fund balance right now?
I have that at the start of fiscal year 24, $991,000. If we draw that down, it's going to be $656,000, I think. And Julie, we don't have a minimum fund balance in this one. It is a special revenue, but we like to still lean towards the operational fund balance policy. GFOA requires us anywhere between 15 and 25% of expenditures, and right now, that $656 fund balance will keep us at 40%.
Okay.
So, we're well above that.
Okay. Counsel, questions? And anything left over will go back into fund balance.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Comments?
Yeah, can I get some clarification on the two documents? The one that we have right now is, I think, the latest version of what you just showed us.
Yes, sir. The latest version is without Tech Dot support. The first, the original one in there was with Tech Dot support.
Okay, I thought that's what the difference was. Just want to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Okay, are we ready to vote? All right, do we have a motion? I'll move to approve ordinance number 2023-34 on first reading. We have a second from Jeff. All in favor? Right hand please. All right, and this will come back to us, it's the first reading, it will come back to us in January, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And we do plan to give you a follow-up on the event, how it played out.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, we are ready for 8A. Shelley, if you'll read us in, please.
Resolution number 43-2023, a resolution casting votes of the City of Curville, Texas, for Cur Central Appraisal District KCAD Board of Directors. This item is eligible for executive session 551.074.
All right, do we need to go into executive session, counsel? All right, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion if no one wants to go into executive session. I'll move to approve or adopt resolution number 43-2023 and fill in the blanks as follows with the following votes. Amy receives one vote, Jack with 248 votes, Carter with one vote, Wesley with 248 votes, Eric with one vote, Larry with 248 votes, Rolinda with one vote, and Jay with one vote, totaling 749 votes.
A second. We have a second. All in favor with your right hand, and it is unanimous. All right, thank you, counsel. And that needs to go, as you guys know, to the appraisal district tomorrow. All right, we are ready for 8C. And Shelley, if you will read this in, please.
Purchase-sell agreement between the City of Curville Economic Improvement Corporation, EIC, and Mega Creed Real Estate LLC, Project Mount Saddle, which agreement provides for the EIC to convey property it owns along the 300 block of Peterson Farm Road, consisting of approximately 86.71 acres. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right. Mr. Hornis.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you again. So, this was an item we discussed during the workshop, and y'all received a redlined version of the purchase and sale agreement, along with a restriction agreement that was presented to EIC. Martin, can you pull up that PowerPoint? Go over the deliverables for everybody on both sides? Nope. This is not my day for IT.
That's okay.
I'm really failing. I apologize. That's me. Not Martin, I can tell you that. Martin is back there. By the way, for those of you that don't know, that is the unsung hero of this whole place. He, how he manages to keep us on track and on time. He's cursing my name, I can tell you that, George.
He's probably doing it on purpose, Michael.
First step is to admit you have a problem. And I do. Okay. So, on a high level, what I want to do is go over the deliverables on both sides, and then talk through the changes that you all have in the redlined agreement that you have in front of you, and then respond to any questions y'all have. So, the airport, or not the airport, the EIC owns 86 acres adjacent to the airport. Don't get any ideas. And that's the deliverable. So, the EIC has owned this property for 20 some odd years. The original intent was to participate in a project for the USDA facility to move to this location. The current zoning is in place for a planned development district that includes insects and all kinds of cool stuff that they do at that USDA facility. However, funding did not come through at that time, and so the project has been, and the property has been in the hands of the EIC for that 20, those 20 years. So, this new company that is coming in is agreed to build at least a 75,000 square-foot building. They'll go through their inspections within the next 120 days. They'll start the rezoning process that we discussed with the EIC that would go from PDD to industrial manufacturing for this project. They will bring at least 45 jobs that exceed the median wage here in Kerr County. Of those 45 jobs, they will target at least 60% or 60% of those possible employees from here in Kerr County. The minimal taxable value placed on the property after it's developed will be $25, so it's currently a non-producing property. The EIC owns it. Huh?
Twenty-five thousand.
She said $25.
This is going to be a long night. Thank you. $25 million. Dark Sky compliant, the point of sale for the business will be here in Curville, so that means that the sales tax that is generated will come to the city council, the county, and the EIC, which is fantastic. There's a requirement to address screening for their neighbors. They're very cognizant of that, and they want to be mindful. And the EIC also has approval of the exterior elevations, so they'll just get authority to comment, take a look at those, and we can, I think what we said earlier is that we'll work with them beforehand to kind of make sure that that building is, you know, Curville-esque in their design. And then there's portions in the agreement clawbacks for the repayment of the grant for failure to perform. And then there is a three-year restriction on the sale of any of the property where EIC has to approve that sale, and also has the right of first refusal to, you know, match any of those offers. So, those are the deliverables they have to come with. So, the changes that you see in the contract before you, there was a, there's two parts of it. So, there's the purchase and sale agreement, and then there is the exhibit that is the restriction agreement that sits in behind it, in Exhibit B. So, before I get to that, sorry, the last little piece that will be included in this was finalized today was that these folks are going to use city water, and there's going to be a prohibition within the contract that they're not going to be allowed to drill any wells. So, them or any future purchasers of that property will have to be on city water, so there'll be no new wells drilled on this 86 acres. So, I wanted to make sure that was included in there. Really, the only changes to the purchase and sale agreement are Section 6 on the tax portion. They had asked that if there were any rollback taxes that the EIC would pay for it, and the EIC said, no, not. I don't believe there's going to be, but the, basically, what, if there's ag exemptions, the, they can go back three years to collect those. And so, we said the EIC is not going to pay for those taxes for you. And then the boundary and survey description will be in there as Exhibit A. And then in the restriction agreement, Section 6.1, which addresses... Sorry, I should have had it up here. The use of the property. So, there's an addition to that piece right there. Section 6.5, so there was a section in there that dealt with sales tax revenue for the first five years, so that was removed. The fact that they're going to put their sales, their sales office here in Curville, put $25 million worth of value into the property was sufficient for EIC. They didn't feel the need to include that in there and be too restrictive. And the last piece, which is Section 6.9, that addition will stay in to the agreement. Essentially, the repayment of the grant, which is if they repay the grant and they purchase the property from EIC, the obligations for much of the agreement will be null and void because they paid for the property. So, EIC said yes to that provision. And with that, I will turn it over to any questions that you all may have.
All right, counsel, any questions? Comments? Correct me if I'm wrong, but weren't we just one of the finalists at the last meeting for this company?
We still are.
Okay, so none of this, so this is not, it's not been confirmed that our site has been selected?
This would finalize it.
This would finalize it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Pardon me?
Unofficially.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay.
That's the boss.
What do you mean unofficially?
So, with economic development deals and with a lot of these, they are NDAs, so it's still private and mixed with public. So, this is happening, you know, if everything goes through with it, ideally, this will go through. So, without really saying it, yes, this company is ideally looking at and putting their kind of effort into the city of Curville, and so we're continuously moving forward with that, you know, going forward, so.
You want this stuff in place?
Yes, ma'am.
Before you make an announcement.
So, both the business and the city want all the moving parts in place to make sure that, hey, this is the final thing before all of the bells and trumpets and everything go off. So, if counsel said no on this one, then obviously, they have to move on to somewhere else, so.
So, this agreement is not an urgent a packet. The one that we received via email yesterday, that's, is that the one that we are being asked to approve, or are there additional amendments to the one we received yesterday morning?
What we're asking for y'all to approve is EIC ratified that agreement with the changes listed here, and so we're asking you all to approve that. Ratified, EIC's...
They're taking the one we got yesterday morning, because obviously, EIC's meeting was yesterday after that. Taking that agreement and the amendments that they made, and then now that's the final thing that we're asking, being asked to approve, right?
With the exception of adding the water restriction.
Yes, sir.
With that exception, okay. Do you, on Exhibit A, on the boundary description of the property, that, did EIC take care of that? Because that was left blank on our copy.
We have that, so it was a part of the annexation agreement from the original annexation, so that's the, that's the survey and the boundary that still stands, so yes, we have all that. Yes, sir.
I'm just going to say respectfully and frankly, this probably could have been handled better and more smoothly so that we can actually see an agreement, because I'm going to tell you right now, you can tell me all the changes that are made, I don't have it in front of me. And I was told we got it yesterday, and then now told, well, you did, but now changes are made. So, I would have been a little bit more okay with having at least, I would have wanted more, of course, but at least to give us a little bit over 24 hours to review that one, but then changes were made. I think it's just not ready. If we, I mean, we're essentially being asked to blindly approve an agreement, and we can't see it. And this is, we go over this a couple of times with other projects and other agenda items, and I'm just requesting that, I don't know, we need, we need a more efficient process in the background to make sure this gets done and handled more efficiently and better so we are all on the same page about what's being approved. Because I can tell you right now, if you had me go up there on that podium and try to reiterate what I just voted on to the citizens, I could not tell them this is exactly what I'm voting on for you right now. Please, I can't see it. And that doesn't help me perform my duty as a council member. So, I'm going to have to vote no on this. We haven't, we don't even have the full thing in front of us.
This is what EIC voted on last night.
Yes, ma'am, with those, with those changes attached to it, yes, ma'am.
Yes.
And for the record, that vote was unanimous.
It was.
That vote was unanimous, yes, sir.
Mr. Hayes has pointed out that there's one other change, and that's the prohibition against drilling a water well.
Mayor, I move to postpone this item until our next regular meeting.
Do we have a second for that motion? It lacks, fails for lack of a second. I move to finalize the economic development project application to the City of Curville Economic Improvement Corporation, EIC, from Light Creed, Inc., Project Mount Saddle, for the Economic Improvement Corporation to convey property it owns along the 300 block of Peterson Farm Road.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor? Right hand, please. There are four votes for, opposed. Councilmember Garcia is opposing it. It passes four to one. 8D, Shelley?
Economic Development Grant Agreement between Lennar Homes of Texas Land and Construction LTD and the City of Curville, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation. There is one citizen speaker signed up. Michael?
Ma'am, okay. Thankfully, this contract is in your packet, so I do appreciate what you're saying there, sir, and we will continue to work to make sure we accommodate that as best we can as we move forward, okay? So, the EIC approved this development agreement with Lennar a while ago, and so we wanted to make sure that we got this on your agenda for ratification, and so let's go over the particulars of what this one is. So, we have discussed this one considerably. So, this is the 500-unit development, Lennar's Windridge Project, and so one of the requests that came to EIC was to assist with funding regional infrastructure and help Lennar help defray some of those costs. That regional infrastructure will help not only their development, but the commercial developments surrounding it, as well as future developments in the adjacent property. Here is the, kind of the latest iteration, or the iteration that has been before, everybody. If y'all remember, there were lots of 25-foot lots, and those are all gone. So, those have been removed, so it's 35 and 45-foot lots. That portion is y'all's. Y'all are addressing that within the TERS discussion, the development agreements. EIC's portion is, again, regional infrastructure, and so that blue portion right there is all going to be commercial access on the loop, interior, those white parts of the lots, regional detention basins within there on those yellow areas. What are EIC's deliverables for this? So, it's a $5 million grant. It's $2 million upon substantial completion of the infrastructure. substantial completion of the infrastructure. And then after that, it would be four annual installments, no more than one installment per year, for $750,000. So it's $5 million in total. And I think they're going to exceed this number, but for the sake of the agreement, they are going to build at least 62 homes per year. So as a part of the agreement with EIC, this one goes, puts it at two, they have to build at least 248 homes. They can go all the way up to the 500 homes. So you have the agreement in your packets. I don't want to go over every single one of their iterations, but they're typically two, three-bedroom, two-bath houses, two-car garages, stipulations in the agreements, call for two-car driveways as well. Again, those are 35- and 45-foot lots. And with that, I will turn it over. If y'all have any questions about EIC grant.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Hornis?
Can you tell me what their reasoning for capping it at that, those housing developments was instead of the full thing? Guaranteeing that they did it, completed the project, I guess, essentially?
Well, so their part is more about the regional detention than it is about the homes, right? It is about, it is about both. But I think it was an effort to compromise in, in the agreement. So their agreement, again, is about regional infrastructure. It's about the regional detention and the transportation portions to it, not primarily about that. So we amended that just to bring it, just to bring it down for the sake of making sure they can accomplish it, right? So if we had provisions that were going to go for eight to 10 years versus this is going to be a five-year agreement, we had to set, we also had to set marks that they could hit, right? So they're not going to build 500 homes in five years. They're going to build 500 homes in like 10 years. And so EIC's grant is going to probably last six years, I would say.
So is this essentially, as a grant being, I'm trying to find the basis for how they can use these taxes for this type of project. Are they saying essentially that the grant is for, the $5 million is for the affordable housing aspect, or for this potential surrounding businesses, and that's where the regional infrastructure comes in?
That's correct.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
But the money's being given to Lennar, who is not doing, I mean, and they're not planning on putting any type of business enterprises. Are they right? They're just doing the housing. I'm really confused on how it plays out and how they can, they can get this money in terms of the 4B regulations.
Legally, how they can get it? Is that what you're asking?
The, the regulations that are set in place for how the 4B sales taxes are to be used, one of them is for the finance of new and expanded business enterprises. I mean, that's the primary one from the controller. And...
That's all you need. That's all you need. That's the standard. That's the project right there. That's all you need.
Well, my question is, is...
Let me finish. And so I sent you all some information about this. And so that's the primary one. And if you look, go through the recitals, I lay it all out. And I do that for every project that EIC does, so that EIC is aware of how we're getting to a legal contract and ultimately, how councils are aware. I sent you the contract with some information about how we're getting there. It's the regional infrastructure. I could have also, I believe, added the affordable housing, but in discussions with the EIC, wasn't exactly clear on, because I don't think the state statute's very clear on affordable housing, because it says, "as described by federal law," and it doesn't say, "in compliance with federal law." So how do you get there? The third kind of component, overall component to this is, and I think you all hear this, is business enterprises in town, whether they're represented by the chamber or KEDC or themselves, are coming before you all periodically and saying, "Hey, we can't expand, or we can't hire employees, because we don't have housing here." And so I think that's kind of another offshoot. Now, I didn't, I didn't drop that into the agreement, per se. But if you just focus on 501-103, which is, which is, I decided there, you know, I think this is a valid contract.
Okay, thank you. I have concerns with the way that the money is being used for this type of project in addition to, I mean, not going into reiterating all my concerns about just the Lennar project in general, but applying those because it's regarding the same project. So those concerns also apply to this.
All right, counsel. Any other further questions or comments? We do have a citizen speaker?
Yes, ma'am. George Peruti.
George Peruti, 1616 Glen Road. So to answer your question, Ms. Garcia, the contract in front of you just points out one, 501-103, as you asked. And that is listed as, as it's been stated, expenditures that are found by the Board of Directors to require suitable for infrastructure to promote or develop newer expanded business enterprises. The other thing that isn't being listed in there is that in order to give away economic development money, you have that three-pronged test that says you have to ensure that the predominant purpose is to accomplish a public purpose. The public purpose is newer expanded business enterprises. The, you also have to ensure that the political subdivision receives a return of benefits, which you can argue that they do. But where is the newer expanded business enterprises that are in there? The third one, and it's the one that makes this whole thing problematic, is it needs to retain public control over the funds to ensure that the public purpose is accomplished and to protect the public's investment. In the contract, the only clawbacks requirements or whatever is directed at the housing. And yet, that's not newer expanded businesses. To, with all due respect to the other businesses that need housing, that's not infrastructure for newer expanded businesses. That's housing. And EIC has a housing clause that they wouldn't have qualified for because it's qualified buyers being put in there. So you wouldn't, you didn't have the structure for that. So the question becomes, this is zoned business. There is no thought of business development. And as you pointed out, Lennar Homes isn't going to develop it. They don't own the land. They are not even projecting to develop that. Therefore, we are giving money to Lennar, and we're not holding them, we're not ensuring that the newer expanded businesses is going to come there. The other thing that's really important to understand is $5 million. It's being claimed as for regional infrastructure, defined in the contract as being infrastructure used to make the residential housing usable. That's not the commercial development. You look at that price sheet that they gave you in the early forms of this, and look at the detention pond that's at the south point of that business part along Loop 534. If you concluded all of that is regional, that impacts that business, the cost of building that is nowhere near $5 million. It's listed, itemized in there. You have in front of you a contract that you're not even supposed to be reviewing because it doesn't meet with the thing, the laws of EIC. You're going to tell me that EIC voted to approve this? Great. That doesn't make your job done, because you're supposed to oversee these projects. And so I would ask you to consider, where are this, the three-pronged tests being satisfied? And how are we controlling this, this grant to ensure that newer expanded business enterprises are coming? Because so far, the contract doesn't show it. It's a housing development. That's what you're looking at. And we pulled out the housing code because it was problematic. So I don't understand why it's still here. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is the end of the citizen speakers.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move to deny the Economic Development Grant Agreement between Lennar Homes of Texas Land and Construction, LDT.
Is there a second to that motion? It dies for lack of a second. Do we have another motion?
I move we approve the Economic Development Grant Agreement between Lennar Homes of Texas and the City of Kerrville, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor? Raise your right hand, please. Opposed? We have one. Mr. Garcia is opposing. It passes four to one. Thank you for all your work. Been a lot. Thank you. Eight E.
Approval of offer letter from the Kerrville Kerr County Airport Manager to the Carnegie Holding Company, LLC for the airport to purchase 54.95 acres of land adjacent to the airport, such offering the amount of $824,250. There is no citizen speaker signed up.
Our favorite person tonight.
Yeah, I'm Drew, for the, and much balder. So yes, this is a request from the Joint Airport Board to make an offer on a piece of property that is adjacent to the airport. As a part of this process, there are a bunch of text dot requirements that have to happen. And I'm going to muddy this, I'm sure. I want to say that Mary Rohr has been sitting with us all evening. And, and she is our wonderful airport manager. So why is it before you? It is before you because within that interlocal agreement between you and the county, it says that anything over $75,000, professional services, contracts, any of that, has to come before and be approved by both bodies before we can move forward. So I'll get to what the project is here in a second. But the process that Tech Dot goes through is the airport has to submit that they're interested in this piece of land. Then they have to attain an appraisal on the property. And then they have to approach that property owner with a offer that's at least the value of that appraised land. So the land appraised for $824,250, all right? If it's approved and accepted as an offer by those folks, then they can move forward and they can purchase this 54 acres. So where is it? What is it? So if you look at this image here, the airport outline, generally speaking, is that yellow boundary right there. The adjacent property is outlined in blue. And the pink area that's right at the bottom on 27 is 55 acres that the airport would like to consider purchasing. Why that direction? All right. That direction is because there's kind of two ways this main runway can go. And if it goes the other direction, it hits Almooney Road, and then if you've been by Almooney Road, a very big swale that takes just tons and tons and tons of dirt to level off versus going this direction, which is considerably flatter land. And so why would they be looking for that? So this would be to extend their runway, to ensure that more planes can come, larger access can come, that they can expand the airport's footprint and continue to build on it. So not unlike San Antonio's airport, which is going through growing pains, they're landlocked. Our airport is landlocked. And so it limits new buildings. So this would provide them the opportunity for expansion into the future and going in a direction that is significantly easier to build on. So in kind of a closer look, what you can see is the air, that sort of light gray runway extension would be kind of the first phase of their possible extension. And overall, they would want to get their runway, which is now 5,300 and something feet. And this would extend it all the way to 7,000 feet over time. But that would require the purchase of this area to now encompass their runway protection zone or RPZ zone. So go back to that. So this is the front portion of that property, right? The, the person who purchased it, they want to do a subdivision to the rear, 10 to 14 acre lots, I believe, is what they're looking to do going all the way back. So what have we done so far? So the city and the county have budgeted $350,000 apiece for the property. We didn't know what that number was going to come back at from Tech Dot. So the airport board has agreed that they will use other funds that they have available to them in their CIP and what's called IIJA funding to account for the delta in that $700,000 to $824,000. But before they do any of this, before they approach anybody, they have to come ask us to consider it. So the offer letter is at Chelsea's table. It's a budgeted item, and it's, it is a fantastic opportunity for them. And if, so the next step essentially is they would give that offer letter to the property owners. And if they want to consider that price, then that's fantastic. They would sign on the dotted line, and we would all move down the road. Or they would counter with a different price, and then Tech Dot will help with Mary with the negotiations in that. And I wanted to mention, while we discussed it in budget as a possibility for a 90-10 reimbursement, right, we're not certain when that would come in. So what we asked of you all was to fully budget $350,000 as your portion of that land purchase, which is what we talked about. So the hope, the expectation is that in 2026, 2027, Tech Dot will come back with a 90-10 reimbursement for that. But I want to speak to what's real, what we have in front of us, right? So right now, this is what y'all have before you. And so Mary is asking that you consider it, and let her go take this offer down to the property owners. And with that, I will turn it over to any questions.
Has the county acted on this?
They had it on their agenda on Monday, and it was agendized in a way that didn't allow for them to consider it. But they did put it in their budget. And so Commissioner Letts was texting with me, and he said that, you know, that they're, he's hopeful to have it on their agenda on the 27th of this month to consider it for approval. They discussed it favorably, I think is the way he described it.
Yes. Yeah. The commissioner called me, too. He said that they would have voted in favor of it, except the agenda didn't have the proper notice for them to take, to vote on it. But otherwise, they all were in favor. Can I ask, how much funding do you have left over to cover the overage? Because what, about 125 that you're going to have to cover, assuming the offer is accepted of about 825 now? Would you mind telling us what you have in reserve?
My name's Mary Rohr. I'm the airport manager at Kerrville Airport. We've been working with Tech Dot and Texas, Tech Dot has some availability of some funding, this FAA IIJA funding, which is this infrastructure funds, and it can be used for land purchase. So there's, there, it's an annual amount of about $300,000 per year. So we, we want, once a contract is signed, and we can apply for it. They'll be applying for it every quarter. So once we know we have an, agreed to offer, that we would apply to Tech Dot for that additional amount to make sure that then we could get through it.
Gotcha. Okay, I guess I misunderstood. I thought it was in reserve funds that we had. It's a...
It's a, it's a new, it's an FAA funding requirement or FAA funding availability for airports.
Is it guaranteed that we'll get that amount, or we'll get the 300 or whatever you applied for if we do? Or is it, you know, subject to them? So we may need to find other ways to cover the 125?
My understanding is, is that the funding has already been allocated from the FAA, and they have, it's a four or five-year program with certain tranches of amount of money each year, and it's been divvied up amongst all the airports. So we've known what our amount is, and now it's actually getting doled out. So that was, that was a question. It was always held, and now the money is available. So Tech Dot is actually distributing those money, the money, making applications to the FAA and distributing it to us quarterly. So we just got to get ourselves into a quarter and then be able to get reimbursed.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mary?
Sorry.
No.
Is this going, is this going to extend the runway so bigger planes can land now?
Where the other piece that's coming together is we're about ready to embark into what we call an airport planning layout and a planning study. So that will be part of all of that conversation. So yeah, it might be a ways away, but this is, this is a great opportunity to make sure that we have the land around our airport that we need.
Thank you very much.
Knowing that, knowing my experience with Tech Dot and the FAA, it will take a bit.
Okay. Any other comments or questions, anybody? I just, I am excited, as you know, and this, we're just polishing that diamond. May take a while, but it's, it's, it's just a great opportunity. So...
Thank you for your support.
All right. Do we have a motion, counsel?
Yes. I will move to authorize the Kerrville Kerr County Airport Manager to submit an offer of $824,250 to Carnegie Holding Company, LLC for 54.95 acres of land adjacent to the airport.
You have a second?
Yes.
We have a second. Mr. Herring has seconded it. All in favor? All in favor? Please raise your hand. And it is unanimous. Good work. All right, we have three items left. Appointments to committees. And let's look at 9A, the Library Advisory Board. And our interview team was Mr. Herring and Ms. Hughes.
Yes, we had many, many applications. We appreciate very much everybody's willingness to serve. And at this time, I move to appoint Marnie Bethel and Jill Drake.
Second.
Okay, Marnie Bethel and Jill Drake. All right. Do we have a second to, we do have a second? All in favor? Right hand, please. And it is unanimous. Just want to say thank you to all of those who have applied. Thoroughly, thoroughly appreciate their willingness to serve, and we have that one taken care of. 9B, appointments to planning and zoning. We could go into executive session on this. Mr. Harris and Ms. Hughes are our interview team. Do we need to go into executive session?
No, ma'am.
We do not. All right? Do you have, do you have a motion for us?
I do, yes, ma'am. I like, like Councilmember Hughes just said, we had five applicants, three reappointed, eligible for reappointment, and I would like to make the motion to reappoint John Bernhardt, Kevin Bernhardt, Abram Boucher, and appoint John Lovett.
And I second that. Okay, we have a motion to, for two reappointments. John Bernhardt and Abram Boucher.
I'd like to ask a question whenever you get a chance.
And we have one, John Lovett. Are there any additional questions or comments before we vote?
Yeah, just curious, unless, if you want to go into executive session, discuss it if you need, but was curious why the recommendation is not to also appoint Mr. Swallow?
I'll say it.
You can go into executive session if you'd like.
He's missed several meetings.
Okay. I know he has missed a few, but-
He just, he just got married.
Okay.
And his wife and he are going to do extensive travels coming up.
Okay.
So that's, that's why.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. And again, a thank you to Mr. Swallow for his past service, and a thank you to Mr. Porte for putting in an application. 9C, appointments to the Recovery Community Coalition. Interview teams, team, Mr. Garcia and Mr. Herring.
Would you like me to start? Would you like to start?
Go ahead.
Okay. Appreciate all the applicants. They made our job a little bit easier. We have four vacancies to fill, four terms to fill, and four applicants. And so unless you want to provide any other comments, I'll move to appoint Randy Bleno, Alan Peterson, Phil Taylor, and Dale Trees to the Recovery Community Coalition.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Right hand, please. And it is unanimous. And again, thank you to all of these peoples for their willingness to serve. We have come to the end of our meeting. Are there any items that need to be put on a future agenda? All right, at this time, 8:15, we are adjourned. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody.
And happy birthday!
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Chief.
Chief has a happy birthday. We'd sing for him, but it might ruin his day, so.
Already did.
You did, okay.